Seven, six, five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening and welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting of March 4, 2021. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item two is the roll call. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Lance. Would you mind unmuting Councilmember Lance?
All right, here.
Councilmember Mackin.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell sends her regrets, and Mayor Cunningham.
Here.
Thank you.
Can I get a report out from closed session, please?
I noted two items and took, provide direction to City Manager.
Thank you. You good, Tom?
Yeah, sorry, I have video problem or audio problem.
Okay, just checking. Item three, adoption of the agenda. Can I get a first and a second to adopt the agenda as it stands?
I'll move we adopt the agenda as stands.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lance.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
And Mayor Cunningham.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, can I go ahead and read the preamble for folks? Get more information. So this meeting is compliant with the Governor's Executive Order N-2920 issued on March 17, 2020, allowing for deviation of teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. The purpose of this is to provide the safest environment for staff, council members, and the public while allowing for public participation. The public may address the council using exclusively remote public comment options. The council may take action on any item listed in the agenda. Members of the public may view the City Council meeting by logging into the Zoom webinar. City Council meetings can also be viewed live and/or on-demand via the city's YouTube channel, youtube.com/brisbaneca, or in Comcast, Channel 27. Archive videos can be replayed on the city's website, brisbaneca.org/meetings, to address the City Council. The City Council meeting will be an exclusively virtual meeting. The City Council agenda materials may be viewed online at brisbaneca.org, at least 24 hours prior to a special meeting and at least 72 hours prior to a regular meeting. Meeting participants are encouraged to submit public comments in writing in advance of the meeting, aside from commenting while in the Zoom webinar. The following email and text line will also be monitored during the meeting. Public comments received will be noted for the record during oral communications, one into or during an item. Email ipad@brisbaneca.org, text 6282192922. Join the Zoom webinar with a webinar ID 99193628666, passcode 123456. If you need special assistance, please contact the City Clerk at 415-508-2113. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item four, awards and presentations. This is our first meeting in March, and I would like to greet everyone happy Women's History Month. The city is looking forward to sharing more notable accomplishments around women's history and women's rights with you this month, including a quote of the week from the Blast City Managers Weekly Update. Make sure you're signed up to receive them in your inbox each Friday afternoon by visiting brisbaneca.org/subscribe. Moving on to item five, oral communications, number one. City Clerk, do we have anybody?
Are there any members of the public wishing to make public comment at this time?
If you're in the Zoom, can you please raise your hand by clicking the Participants button from the meeting controls at the bottom of the screen and selecting the Raise Hand function? We'll give everybody a minute to see if we get any raised hands here.
I've received no written correspondence or public comments.
Any texts at all?
None.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to item six, the Consent Calendar. Can I get a first and a second to approve the Consent Calendar items A through F? You have a second?
Madam Mayor, I have a question for you.
Certainly.
I have some questions on item F, and I wondered if, in fact, we could remove it from consent for further discussion.
We can do that. We'll remove item F. So can I get a first and a second to approve Consent Calendar items A through E?
The moved.
Again.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lance.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
And Mayor Cunningham.
Aye.
Item seven, staff reports. Item G, City Managers Report on Upcoming Activities, please.
Madam Mayor, would you like to speak on item F?
Yeah, I think John should be available to speak on item F if Councilman Mackin has any specific questions.
Yes, I actually had quite a few questions. I thought the document was very comprehensive. It's really a great review of the general plan. But there were some items in here that I just kept asking, what's the status? Or some that seemed complete that I still had questions. So my overriding question is, when is the appropriate time the council can actually go through this and ask questions? I mean, from picking it apart tonight, which is not my intention, but I think there are some items in here that deserve further review. And in the cover, John, you talk about Housing Element. On what's page one of two, on page, it would be two of two. You talked about, the first paragraph on that page, "Five programs have not commenced." Could you tell us what the five programs are?
Yes, let me go to that part of the, part of the packet. Bear with me, and I'll get to it in a second here. We also have Associate Planner Robbins, who actually prepared the document. So Jeremiah, if you want to join in and if you want to help me find that quickly for everyone's benefit, that would be helpful.
It might be in Appendix B. I'll try to bring that up.
And just for context for anybody that's watching, it says that of 185 general plan programs that are reported under the Housing Element, 155 have been implemented or are ongoing programs implemented on a continuous basis. Another 25 programs are either partially complete or currently underway, while five programs have not commenced.
Councilmember Mackin, are you referring to programs in the Housing Element or the General Plan? Because they're split up separately in this document?
I'm on page two of two of your memorandum. First paragraph. I think it's talking about general plan, excluding Housing Element programs.
Okay.
I'm sorry, so are we talking general plan policies or programs or Housing Element programs?
These are general plan. They'd be under Appendix A then.
Well, if it pleases the council, or we can do this, we can either go through it this evening, or the program or the obligation on the city that has a time sensitivity is the Housing Element Annual Report. So if you'd want to approve that, if you're comfortable with approving the Housing Element Annual Report, and we could defer sending off the General Plan Annual Report, and we can either reschedule this, or we can discuss it this evening. It's really the council's pleasure. The only one that's time-sensitive is getting the Housing Element Annual Report to the state.
Well, personally, I think that the Housing Element report is fine. It's just the general plan items that, there are some things in here that perhaps need updating. I mean, just as an example, it mentions working with PG&E on any kind of rebate programs, and most of Brisbane is under Peninsula Clean Energy, so that should be updated to reflect energy providers, maybe, as an example. But I'm not trying to nitpick just on wording, but there are other items in here that I just have questions on whether some of these things really still exist or whether it's accurate. And I understand that since this is general plan, any changes, and I would appreciate guidance on this, might require general plan amendments. Is that true?
Well, the point of this particular report is basically to look at the general plan language as it currently exists, and then report as to its implementation status. We're not in a position, as part of this particular, we're reporting what's on what the general plan currently says. So if the general plan is out of date, or the language in the general plan may not be, you know, completely accurate anymore, there's no vehicle here to sort of correct those kind of things administratively. That would require a general plan amendment. And again, the city's longer-term program has always been to comprehensively update the general plan once the Baylands project is complete. So really, this is more of just for the state. They want us to sort of be accountable for what we're doing to implement the general plan as it currently exists. But, you know, again, to the extent you want to go through this in detail, that's the council's pleasure. We can do that however you see fit.
Well, reconsidering based on what you said, John, I think we can defer this to another time. I think it just struck me that there are so many things in here that are out of date or questionable as to the real status. But knowing what the intent of this is, it probably can stand as is for now. But I would appreciate at a later date, sometime when appropriate, that we could go through this with a little more detail.
Sure, it might be the council's pleasure to refer this to the Planning, Council Planning Subcommittee, or you can hear it as a full body. Again, that's your choice. However, you want to proceed.
I think that's a good suggestion, and then it would be probably a lot more time-effective as well. Just to go to a subcommittee and work out some of these details to bring back.
Are there any other comments on this item? Hang on, I'm scrolling to make sure I see everybody. Looks like there's not. So do we now have? Can we now approve item F? Are you happy with that, Colleen?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we need a motion and a second to do that separately.
The moved, provided by.
Your second, Colleen?
Yes.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lance.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Mayor Cunningham.
Aye. Thank you. So now we can move on to Staff Reports, City Managers Report on Upcoming Activities, please.
Thank you, Mayor. For the March 4th update. Go to the, there we go. So the COVID-19 vaccine information, some of the key stats at this point are as of 3/3, March 3rd, 40% of the county residents 65 and over have completed their vaccine series. 225,000 vaccines have been administered. In Brisbane, we have just slightly over 1/4% of our population, 16 and older, have received at least the first vaccine dose. Continued reminder that more data on the vaccine, as well as status of the virus, can be found at San Mateo County Health. And it's expected that MyTurn, which is the state app, will offer vaccine appointment scheduling in San Mateo County starting on March 15th. So some reminders with regards to mask wearing, and I read an article today that even if you're vaccinated, you should continue to wear masks for the time being. The recommendation is to double masks, but do not combine two disposable masks or combine a K and 95 mask with any other mask. They're recommending that you use a cloth mask with multiple layers or a disposable mask under a cloth mask. Fit your mask snugly against your sides of your face and over your nose without gaps. Secure it with ties or ear loops. Ensure that breathing is not too difficult and ensure that vision is not obstructed. The Restaurant Brewery and Winery Grant Program that we've been advertising is available through March 8th at noon. I know we have had some applications from Brisbane, and as the council's aware, we are looking at potentially supplementing the countywide program with some additional funding locally. So we'll be reporting back to you soon on that. Reminder that Samtrans is providing free rides to vaccination sites. All you need to do is show the driver license, proof of your vaccine appointment, or your vaccination card. Our farmer's market will be going to spring summer hours, starting on March 18th. And those hours are from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. We are going to be holding a vigil in the community park for the anti-Asian-American Pacific Islander hate crimes. This has been in the news a lot lately. I think there was even another unfortunate incident in San Francisco yesterday. So we've been working with a member of our community, Calvin Lee. You can see his email address there, thecalvinlee@gmail.com. He's looking for people to be involved in this event. The city will help sponsor this. The mayor will be one of the speakers. It'll be March 20th at 4:00 p.m. in the community park. Hopefully get as many people out there as we can. We did similar sort of event last summer, as you recall, when the George Floyd Black Lives Matter event was held in the, in the park. So hopefully we can get all the council members out there also. Our Residential Design Visual Preference Survey has been extended to March 23rd. This helps create objective standards for appearance of new housing developments. You can link at the brisbaneca.org/sb2survey. And we are hoping to do a workshop on April 6th from 7:00 to 9:00, and get further feedback from the community on this issue. I believe that's it.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item eight, Mayor Council Matters. The countywide assignments and subcommittee reports, please. I see you first, Madison.
Cliff and I had a meeting with the EPIC Committee, which essentially is the city's internal committee made up of staff members from every department. We met with their liaisons to discuss how we, as a city, might be able to promote more inclusion and diversity, and just discuss what sorts of events we might want to explore over the next year, and what sorts of, like, groups we want to bring attention to. And not only do we want to just honor different ethnic backgrounds, but also people who identify as LGBTQIA+. And so some of the ideas were brought forth at the committee level just to gauge, you know, where Cliff and I, what resonated with us. And kind of the stance that we took is we felt that, you know, we should really entrust the committee to kind of run with their ideas and connecting with members of the community, like Calvin, as you see, who's going to be doing the vigil. You know, how can we bring in people who identify with groups or identify with, you know, religion was one of the things that we also talked about, too, so that they can have a hand if we ever did an event, that they can be a part of that. Because nothing's worse than trying to plan something, recognizing, you know, someone's ethnic background or religious beliefs or, you know, gender or sexual identity that you don't belong to, because you're not qualified to do that. So we just talked about how we can make sure that we're really doing a good job on those events, and also how important storytelling amongst those different things that we do is in helping people realize that we have more similarities than we do differences. And once you really understand someone's story and where they've come from, you know, you can begin to see that, at the end of the day, we're so much, we have so much more in common than we do, you know, than what divides us. So Cliff, do you have anything that you want to add to that description?
Yeah, you know, that was a great description, Addison. It was a very, it was an exciting meeting. I mean, it was one of those meetings you go to, and you just feel really uplifted. And knowing that it came from our staff, and, you know, on their own. They weren't, you know, usually they're asked to perform a certain task, right? Within, you know, their duties that they perform for the city. And here, they gathered together, and this was really important to them. And it was great to get their feedback and their vision and share it with us. And, you know, one of those things that they did, what I thought was really cool, was that they put forth this calendar of different events that are happening, whether it's Black History Month or International Women's Day. And, you know, those various things that, you know, really calling out why it's important and how diversity is such a powerful tool for engagement for a healthy community. You know, one of the things that we also talked about was LGBTQ, you know, issues. And that, you know, being inclusive is such, you know, a great thing in our town, but we could always do better in trying to improve those lines of communication, whether it's through the Star or, you know, social media. And then, you know, trying to learn from others, right? So the best way to learn is to give folks that platform, right? To tell the story like you were saying, Addison. And it, you know, not only is it benefiting that group, but it's also benefiting all of us. So, yeah, really excited to see where they take it in the future.
Do you have anything else, Cliff? Oh, Madison, sorry? No. Colleen, do you want to report out on Complete Streets first?
Mayor Cunningham and I met with Chair of Complete Streets, Kristy, and Vice Chair, Detmer. And we met to hear the committee's 2021 work plan. We started off by acknowledging the accomplishments they made in 2020, the biggest being infrastructure improvements that you saw on safe routes to school. And also, they made some substantial recommendations for Bayshore-San Bruno intersection. So we learned that as part of their 2021 work plan, they've got a lot of things on their list, but the committee will be completing two major projects of interest. One is studying the safety of sightlines at intersections, and the second, examining parking issues in Brisbane. Also, the committee looks forward to increasing community involvement in 2021. And this year, they'll go live with televised meetings pretty soon, so you can find out about their other projects for 2021. I also, Madam Mayor, I have a report on Peninsula Clean Energy, unless you want to add something to Complete Streets first.
I do, before you go on a PC, please. So as a result of that subcommittee meeting, apparently quite a few of the parents who live in the Mobile Home Park are really worried about their kids walking to school when they go back to school. So I went and walked that route the next morning at the time when the children would be walking along Bayshore to get to school. And, yeah, it's pretty terrifying, because, you know, 20-something years ago, when I moved to Brisbane, we didn't even have a stop sign or a traffic light at the center of town. And now you've got cars doing 60 and 70 miles an hour along Bayshore. And some of the separation between the child walking and the car is very small. So I took some pictures and sent it off to the city. And I guess we'll scratch our heads and figure out, you know, how we can help that situation moving forward. Thanks, that's all I wanted to say. Thanks, Colleen. Go ahead.
So Peninsula Clean Energy, Madison will like that. I could go on all night about all the good things they're doing. And I'm so excited to be on this subcommittee, and I mean that. So for the opener, there was recognition about reach codes, which are to promote all-electric building codes for construction, and also EV-ready. And most peninsula cities have either adopted or in the process of enacting codes. There were only two holdouts who refused, and that was Atherton and Woodside. Brisbane also had signed on with really what they literally noted as aggressive electric vehicle-ready codes, as some other communities have. Also, Peninsula Clean Energy, they contracted with an outfit called Grid Alternatives. And this is to manage a used electric vehicle program. This is brand-new. They looked at the brand-new EV sales, and a lot of them are too expensive. And they look at the governor's initiative to introduce more electric vehicles. So the goal here is to educate and encourage acceptance of electric vehicles, but this program will target lower-income and underserved communities. So this program will end up offering incentive payments to help with purchases. But uniquely, they're going to set up dealerships, a whole network of dealerships, that'll offer the PCE incentives at the point-of-sale. And really impressive, the target date for launching this is in the second quarter of 2021. So they're moving very fast. Just also a reminder, PCE is launching a heat pump water heater incentive program. And the goal is to install 200 heaters in the first two years. Those are energy-efficient all-electric heaters. And I learned that there's a double bonus to those. They not only will heat your house in the winter, but they can air-condition it in the summer. Lastly, in December 2020, PCE started a curbside charging pilot. And this is to assess effectiveness of using streetlight-mounted charging stations. So they're partnering with South City, Burlingame, Redwood City, and San Mateo to do testing on this. The testing will continue through 2021. So that's kind of interesting and may have farther-reaching implications. And finally, I don't know if anyone else knows this yet, but Los Banos will be joining Peninsula Clean Energy as a customer pretty soon. They're not in the peninsula, but they They're not in the peninsula, but they actually requested to be part of it. So that's my report. Thank you.
Interesting. Anybody got anything else? Looks like no. Okay, so moving on to item I, the city council meeting schedule. Our next scheduled meeting is March 18th, 2021. Do we have any written communications? Ingrid? I don't have that and I can't see that. Hold on. Okay. We have written correspondence received by the city council. I can see it now. I blew it up. Gary and Tricia Adams, Nancy Luxamana, Prem Lal, and Lizzie Nickerson. Thank you. Now moving on to oral, item nine, excuse me, oral communications, number two. Ingrid, is there anybody who wishes to speak? Have you received any texts or emails?
Attendee Barbara Ebel, raise your hand.
Okay. Barbara?
Hi, greetings, everybody. Good evening to you all. I, of course, read the council's packet. I might have questions if you guys review the general plan information later at date, because there were also some things in there that were sort of head-scratcherous for me. But the main reason I wanted to bring forward, or the main point I wanted to bring forward this evening is just that I personally feel like we have fallen down on our moral obligation to provide that low-income housing and very low-income housing. I noticed that we've built zero units in the last six years, I believe. Did I read that table correctly? And I think that whatever is or is not mandated, we are not fulfilling our obligations to our citizens by just building, you know, mostly moderate, but also high-end housing. And I'm wondering what the city council's plan is to, you know, try and pull that back in line with better inclusion and equity for our citizens of all economic standing for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ingrid, is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
Is there any other member of the public that wish to speak? Please raise your hand using the Zoom function. There are no additional public comments, Madam Mayor.
Any texts or emails?
No texts or written correspondence either.
Okay, thank you. So moving on to item 10, the city of Brisbane, city council meeting of March 4, 2021 is now adjourned. Thank you and good night.